It's been an interesting series.
We have a public comment sheet down here if someone wants to sign up for public comment. At this time, I will now call this meeting to order. If everyone will please stand, we'll have our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, we will observe our moment of silence. Thank you. This time, our approval for the May agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? We do have a change here. Number seven will be transferred down to number 10. She was unable to be here, so we will take Coney's items and Forrest will do those in his section. Also, we will add 10A, which is the fire inspector contract. 10B, which is our solid waste contract for our part-time supervisor. Any other additions, deletions, changes? Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda with these changes addressed?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? We have a motion by Commissioner Gentry to approve the agenda, second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, likewise. Two, approval of the April 12th, April 26th, and May 2nd minutes. We will do all these with one motion.
A motion to be approved, that's submitted.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Wackel for the approval of the April 12th, April 26th, and May 2nd minutes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Gentry. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, likewise. Public comment, Coney. You might want to turn that microphone down.
Short people. All right, I really don't have much to say except for this weekend to use Commissioner Gentry's comment. The tsunami is about to happen. Tomorrow, USA Cycling Staff will start to arrive. There are 30 staff members coming from all over the country. They are going to be eating in our restaurants, they're going to be staying in Mars Hill University. They're going to be dropping a lot of money in the county over the next several days. Thursday is when the cyclists will really start to come. A lot of them, I haven't gotten the final count, but we're hoping for about 100 at the dorms. They're going to have the awards banquet on Saturday night at Pittman Dining Hall. So that's also money that's staying in the county that last year did leave and go down to Asheville, so I'm really happy about that. Friday, all day will be cycling. There's rolling closures, so there will be five or 10-minute delays. A couple of road closures, just briefly, coming into town on River Road and Main Street, just for a short section. We've notified as many people as possible. I hope I haven't made any mistakes, but like the school system, I've even notified the funeral department, the funeral homes, in case they have a funeral going on. I've worked with just about as many people as I can think of, but I'm sure I've made a mistake. So if you hear from anyone that hasn't heard about it, it's in the paper today. I'm really worried about Friday because that is a business day. I have for Sunday, when we have the closure, talked with all the churches. I really feel like they're aware and they've told their congregations. But if you hear from anyone, please let me know so that I can get the communication. In the next couple of days, I can do really well, but after the fact, I can't. So I hope it's going to be really great. I don't know what the weather is. I never look when I do outdoor events. It's just one of those things, I'm superstitious about it. So I hope it's going to be good. If it's bad, maybe they'll spend a little more money in shop. Anyway, so, any questions for me? No? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Coney.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan Cody.
Good evening, this is Chairman and Board. You should have in your packet a notification for a notice of public hearing that we'll be holding at this time. This public hearing is for the Commerce program. This is put on through the State Department of Commerce. And the program is offered using the CDVG funds that are available through the HUD program. They make these funds available to the state. And the state, in working through some of its expenditures, has made a program available that will allow local government officials to attend certain professional development courses.
Mr. Ryan, sorry, I want to open, I forgot we got it.
Yeah, well, I was going to let him.
Oh, okay.
I guess we need to open it now. At this time, I will call the public hearing to order, and I will ask Mr. Ryan Cody to preside over the hearing.
Sorry about that. Go ahead. But as I was saying, the Department of Commerce makes these CDVG funds available to units of local government, and they can attend certain professional development trainings through the school government or through East Carolina University. The program that we've chosen to try to participate in would be the school government program. They offer several different courses that will allow us to better learn about how local governments are run, how financing options are done, and some other things. So at this time, we'll take any comments or questions from the board of commissioners and make comments from the public after that.
Give us, if you would, for the people here too, since it's a public hearing, give us a little more in-depth about the training that the school of government offers and what it's, just a breakdown of what it's for.
Let me, I'm going to pull that up here just so I have it lined up. The courses that the school government offers are the Community Development Academy, and this is a program that will involve community development and certain revitalization of communities. It's, the other one is Development Finance Toolbox, which it gives different development options, allows you to learn about what options are available, what resources are available, and how those resources could be used throughout the county. The other one's Municipal County Administration Course, which goes over different functions of any municipal town or county administration. The Basic Economic Development Course is offered, and the Effective Supervisory Management Course is offered. And each of those programs, you know, for anybody that's chose to. We've selected a few participants here from the county and from the town marshals. One of the requirements that we have to do is partner with one of our local municipalities, and the town marshal's chosen to be that partner at this time. Phil, these courses, I attended the Basic Economic Development Course last year and thought that was a very beneficial course. Was able to learn quite a bit about the basics and the foundations for what economic development is and different things that are out there that the county could be doing. So I think these other courses will be the same way. They'll give us a lot of options and a lot of opportunities. One of the things we have to focus on with this HUD program is that we've got to work on focusing on low and median income families. And you know, as our county, we have a little bit of a higher poverty rate, but we also have a lower median income than a lot of our surrounding counties. So we feel like it'd be a good opportunity for us to look at affordable housing options and maybe work on some housing plans, things like that, so that we can better that median housing group.
And this would pay for all the associated costs within that $50,000 grant?
Yes, yes. The cost of the course lodging itself for these school government trainings, $25,000. And then it would pay for the other associated expenses, travel and meals or anything like that that would be associated. And the remaining portions of the money the county can use as part of this program to develop some plans to help those low and median income families and try to do some other things for the county itself. Any other questions?
None from the board, I don't think. Any questions from the board?
These webinars, is that open to anybody associated with the county government?
That is. I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Commissioner. The webinar is open to anybody that we want to make them available to. And breaking that down, we will try to find us a location where we can put that on and offer that to as many town officials, county boards, county officials that we could. There's a couple of them there that I've lived with, will be really good, that I think would be beneficial to public records law and the open meetings law. I thought might be beneficial, you know, and I deal with the planning board, the economic development board, and more adjustment, so we have to comply with those. And it'd just be a good refresher for those board members, but there may be others who deal in these open meetings, public meetings, that would be beneficial for them to sit in. So we'll try to pick out some times that we can make those available to anybody in county.
We would probably for those two require attendance for all of it, yeah.
And then some of the others, we can offer them a deal or something too.
I would say department heads and even board chairs.
Will you have, when will you have a schedule as far as these, the on-demand for the webinars?
Probably have that sometime in June or early July, depending on. They change their schedule randomly, so a lot of times that, once they put that out there and we've been approved, if we get approved for this, then I think at that point in time we can, we can.
At one of your earlier meetings, you discussed budget issues and increasing your revenues. And of course, your biggest revenue is collection of gambling taxes. And Ms. Laurie is doing a good job of collecting current year's taxes. And your tax rate has gone up, I think, pretty significantly over the last three or four years. And it's anticipated that this year's may be the highest collection probably in a decade or so. However, you do have a lot of older delinquent taxes that are on books. And you folks wanted to make sure that we actively collected those taxes. So in the last three weeks, Laurie and I have updated all of the files that had been sent to me for collection. And we were going to make a report part of your regular monthly meeting as to all of the files that had been sent to me for collection, the status of those, and steps that had been taken from month to month as to the progress that was being made on the collection of those taxes. So as a benchmark, we have included in your materials a list of all of the files that had been sent to me for collection. You will know by looking at those I've attempted to color code them. And the ones that you have shown in red there are all of the files that have been sent to me that some action has been taken on those. And when I say action, it's anywhere you may be on the entire collection process. You'll see that some of those are marked paid, and there's a line through those. Those are closed cases, the ones that do not have a line through them that are red, are active cases, and they may be anywhere in the process. First process is setting up the file and doing a title examination. After you do the title examination, you file a lawsuit. Then you serve all of the parties that are involved. Then you set a hearing before the clerk of court, ask him for an order to sell it. Then you notify it, run your publication in the newspaper to sell it. Then you sell it, and then you go through the open period of the bids. You're well aware of the bidding process as you're selling the old jail, which it's not the same process, but you see how long that has gone on. So this is a process. What I have done for you to keep up with what has happened from month to month, you'll notice that there should be on those, if you printed out a star out at the end of various items. And I don't know, if printed out on the email that you, I think, when you actually printed these off on regular-sized paper, the stars, which was in the last block of each cell item, got deleted. Is it in your star line?
The new copies.
Okay.
It's there, but it's not in the proper order because it's carried on to another page.
Okay. Does that one show the stars on the outside of it?
No, yes. Thank you, ma'am.
Do you see what I'm talking about now?
Yes, sir.
I think there are two sets of stars, maybe. There's a, some of them have won a different cell. These have stars right after the, in the notes column.
And that would be, that would be the same thing. All of the ones in the note columns that have two stars out there is going to be files that action was taken since my last report too. So what I've started in is I've used, I believe, as the benchmark our meeting, which was that August 20, or April 26th, is that time I met with you. So what I have done since that initial meeting, for instance, if you look at the very first file, Ammons, Title Works pending, that means we've opened a file and we started the title search on it. If you go down to the third one, you see Anderson, that was a lawsuit that was actually filed on April the 29th. Bend of Bobby's Estates, Title Work started. So that way, you can look at this, and you can see, when you get this in your pre-meeting package, you can go down through there and actually monitor what our office has done from month to month. We, since the 26th, we have actually opened, I believe, 18 new files for title search. We filed six different lawsuits, and we, apparently somebody must have read the newspaper because before the lawsuit was even filed, Laurie had someone come into her office and entered into payment agreements and substantially paid about $35,000 in taxes so that we did not even have to file that lawsuit. So that's pretty well, if you're comfortable with this, this is how I will handle this report on a monthly basis. If you have any questions or you have suggestions as to the way you want me to handle this, I'll be more than happy to do that. We, we, one, and what I've tried to do is, we've got several collections that are very complicated. And maybe, if you look through here, there are two files that are actually in excess of $200,000. So they're large, and one of those is Breakaway. No action has been taken on that, of course, we've explained that at an earlier time. We may be reviewing that one. The next biggest account that you have on here should be page four, third from the bottom. That is a lawsuit that was just filed. And there are probably nine lots within that subdivision that were sold out that are owned by individuals whose taxes are just two or three years behind. What I did, I contacted Laurie and asked her to send those to me since they were delinquent so that we could go ahead and start those foreclosures so that we could sell this entire tract, try to run those simultaneously, and dispose of either all of the lots individually, or maybe if one person is interested in it, they can bid on all of it and recombine it into one tract of land. So you've built five.
Ms. Ross, that particular account that you were just speaking of, I think the individual that owns that has two other accounts, and they owe us just over $32,000. On page three, the third and fourth name.
That is exactly right.
And those are individuals?
Those are individual lots, and in the ones on three and four, those are the, those two tracts of land right there are lawsuits seven and eight, they are on my desk right now. So I'm trying to do all of these people in groups, you know, so that they'll get their lawsuits all at the same time.
I have one other question.
Yes, sir.
Folks who have a payment plan, and we have a line through payment plan, I assume that means that we've established a pay, they've established a payment plan. What happens if they get off track and they agree to pay the 25% down and so much per month? And we pay payment one, two, and then payment three doesn't happen, doesn't happen, doesn't happen. And Laurie, maybe let you know, how do we stay on track on this?
Ms. Ross, what we've tried to do, of course, collection of taxes is not a hanky thing. I mean, it really isn't. It's some folks own their home, or they own a tract of land, and they get served with a lawsuit. My phone rings, and your phone probably rings, and all of them rings, and they're not happy people. And one of the best things of dealing with this, and we've had discussions on this, is try to be consistent across the board with all taxpayers. I mean, you've got to do that. You can't, you know, you listen to stories, and some of them are gut-wrenching, and some of them aren't. But you have to, you have to treat everybody the same. If you're expecting everybody to pay your taxes, then go there to deal with them. You pretty well have to be consistent. So the payment plan that is being established is something that actually allows the folks come in and pay their taxes. And the biggest key to a payment plan is what these folks avoid is paying me and paying the courthouse. Because if we have to collect it, it's not coming out of your general fund. The taxpayer puts that bill. So if they can come in at an early stage before there's a lot of legal expense involved with it, and they can pay whatever legal expenses occurred so far. with it and they can pay whatever legal expenses occurred so far, the payment plan is 25% of your delinquency that you pay upfront. The balance of it is spread over a 12-month period. If they miss any payment, it comes back to me, no social payment plan, immediate institution of lawsuit. And Laurie monitors those payment plans. So she's looked at this and if there's a...
At three years, I mean, you're giving them a little bit of a cushion there. I mean, but I'm... Whatever the board is in agreement with.
Bill, sir.
Bill?
Yeah. If you did two years, I did have sickness, you know, you've got to have some flexibility whatever you do.
You've always got the payment plan. You know, you've always got the...
Well, and you know, and you've got, for example, on the second one, on page one, you know, Donnie's made a note that there's a pending Medicaid claim.
Right.
I mean, you know, if we find out that somebody's got an extenuating circumstance, that would be where we could continue to monitor that situation and there, you know, it's...
Well, and the whole idea about trying to get the long-term delinquencies down.
Right.
That's why I like the two-year, okay? And the monetary amount because I think that's the way you manage this, to keep this from getting where it was when we started this. And, you know, so I like the two years personally.
Kind of nips in the bud, so it's...
Yeah, it keeps you from getting and having people get in a position where they can't pay.
Well, and that's the problem. If you let it go too far, debt becomes so daunting that, you know, a lot of folks, if they can't see the light at the end of the tunnel, you know, you let it get built up too bad.
Yeah.
I mean, and then there's no going back.
And you do have a payment plan, so actually before somebody falls too far behind, you provide them a payment plan.
To be reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah. It would be to their benefit to start a payment plan sooner than as in a year later.
There's about, you know...
So I mean, I understand that.
Less than a couple hundred dollars gets it started and it doesn't get out halved.
Well, what is the dollar amount of it that we're going to agree on?
Don, I may ask, what from your experience to other counties? You mentioned $500. Is that sort of a benchmark?
Two years, a thousand dollars is pretty common. That way if you have, you know, one piece of land and they missed one year, it happens to be $1,500. And then if you've got someone who is two years and it's a small tract of land and it's only $200 a year, so, you know, the thousand dollars is going to catch your big tracts of land. Two or three years is going to catch your smaller ones and keep somebody from, you know, building up several years of not paying. So, you know, a thousand dollars in two years, a thousand dollars in three years, either one of those, I think, would be very reasonable.
What is... Do we know what our average assessment is in this? I mean, I know they vary dramatically, you know, throughout the county, but do we know what the average assessment is? Laurie?
Those big ones would drive it up.
What's that?
Those big ones wouldn't really drive it up.
Yeah. Well, I understand.
It wouldn't really be an accurate figure.
Well, you could take those big ones out and then you would have...
Yeah, you could weight it. I mean, it would be a weighted average.
Yeah.
Throw out your highs, throw out your lows and then the middle.
You can probably figure, I mean, just knowing what I do about taxes, 250 to 50 is probably an average annual assessment from Madison County.
I would ask, I'd like to... Where y'all are heading, the more you define it, the better it is for the collector's office.
Sure.
And I would ask that if whatever you set it at, that that grace, you know, whatever extenuating circumstances, that still stick to the payment plan.
Yes.
Because it is...
Right.
We tried this three years ago and a former commissioner called and had a, you know, after, oh, we got to do this, we got to do this. And then he called up the tax office, this person's having a hard time, let's back off. Nobody's going to be able to resist that because everybody's going to hear that story. Not nobody, but people are going to hear those stories and it puts Laurie in a position of being part social worker and that's difficult to ever get out of and can get her torn in between lots of different people as well.
Agreed.
But I understand there are circum... There are circumfances that come up. I understand that.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we authorize our tax collector, when the account becomes $1,000 delinquent and two years from the date it was due.
We're going to do or two years or and two years.
And two years. Thousand dollars and...
I don't know, I think you might want to think about that.
Think about the language here.
Yeah. You might want to think about that. I think, I think it needs to be or, not a and.
Or two years.
Yeah. If we do or, if we do and, then that's going to take out those first year big ones.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's good. Or...
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Rice for the setting up the schedule for the collection of taxes, seconded by Commissioner Gentry.
Should we restate that motion just to be clear?
Yes.
I don't need to step on your toes.
Commissioner Rice, please restate that.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize our tax collector to, once an account reaches $1,000 in delinquency or two years from the date it was due, that it be turned over to our attorney for collection.
Okay. That is the motion. The motion was seconded by Commissioner Gentry. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, likewise, motion passed.
Good move, Joe.
The folks are defined with this form here.
Yes. This looks very good.
That's good.
Very good.
Not sure what you can do different, really. We might decide later, but right now I think it's a good template to go by.
Sorry, I've got a question about, I think, understand this, what Laurie and Donnie are working on now. We don't want to stop working on a $30,000 account that's several years old in order to go after.
No, no, no.
So our priority is still to go with it. Just make sure people are going to get through those in the next few months.
Yes.
And then it's going to be getting on that routine schedule.
This doesn't affect, in my opinion, this doesn't affect the ones that have already been prioritized by the tax office.
No.
This is just a template to use to go forward with future collections.
Yes.
That is correct. We good?
Yes.
Ready for me to go to number B?
Go ahead, B.
Now, I don't have anything for B in my book. Is that correct?
There is nothing in our book. There is nothing in your book. Do you know what's...
It was an email.
Yes. Yes, we did.
Yesterday, we got an email which would have been, should have been, a 15-page article from the state of government.
Yes.
Regarding public employers' ability to implement drug testing, either random drug screenings or how you go about drug screening employees in certain situations. That article, it was a 2003 article, case law, is still applicable today. It is all good law. In a nutshell, what I can tell you is that public employers cannot blanket randomly drug screened employees.
Could I stop you just a second?
You certainly can.
Of course, we have no audio on our internet.
Okay.
While we have a timeout, Mr. Chairman, for personal favor, that beep that went off for any of us in here who are softball fans, we won 11 to 4. Yep. Oh, sorry. Sorry about that, just had to make sure.
Thank you.
It's a single elimination tournament?
That's my knowledge, I think. I think it is.
It's usually single elimination until the final game and that's usually two out of three.
Yeah. Excuse me?
However, you can require random drug screening of certain employees. The catch-all for that essentially is employees that are in a safety sensitive type of area. And to digress a little bit, Madison County is a subdivision of the state of North Carolina, which means you are the state, okay? The state cannot invade certain people's privacy rights that are protected by the Constitution, okay? Random drug screens are invading certain people's private rights. You're requiring them without any suspicion or anything to give you a drug screen. So you do not have, there's nothing there that's causing you to do that. You do not have any particular interest in doing it. So as a blanket rule, you can't do it. You're violating, it's an improper search, it's an improper seizure. Fourth Amendment guaranteed rights under the Bill of Rights. Now, the governmental interest of protecting the public, if it is an employee who is in a safety sensitive position, i.e. driving some type of heavy equipment, should be an accident, okay? Someone who is handling sensitive material or information. It's very clear that you can require random drug screens of those kinds. If you're interested in adopting a policy, your first step is going to be identifying those...